I think so.
I think it was.
So wrong last year. It could be wrong. There was that around. Weird for the action. And we're fish pups on our lake.
Oh, boy.
Probably three days ago. Two days before that, we have known it for some time. It's too much.
Especially this most dangerous sport. I'll do five especially with the other sport.
The next problem in order, please join us through the slide.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Welcome, everyone. This is our truth and taxation hearing along with our regular school board meeting. So thanks for being here. We need to start with a motion and a second to approve the agenda for tonight, and then we'll move right to the truth and taxation.
Motion.
We have a motion, step in all papers, say add.
Aye.
Motion first. All right, so our, this is our Director of Business Services, Robyn Robinson, is here to adopt the truth and taxation. Robyn, turn over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board and members of the public. One time a year, I get to present to everyone. So welcome to the Shasaw Lakes Truth and Taxation Public Hearing. Requirements of this meeting, there's always requirements, truth and taxation is based on a 1988 law that requires cities, counties, and school districts to hold a public meeting. So in this public meeting, it needs to be between November 25th, December 28th, at 6:00 PM or later, we're doing both of those. Part of a regular school board meeting, it can be, we're doing that as well. We allow for public comments, and we will have a time for public comments at the end. And then the Board may adopt the final levy at the same meeting. We will talk about our current year budget and then our proposed property tax levy. So our hearing agenda tonight includes background information on school funding, our district's budget for FY '25, our proposed tax levy, and then time for public comments. So the Minnesota Constitution assigns legislator the responsibility to set funding. This just states the law out there. So as a result of that legislation, our funding system is highly regulated. The state sets formulas which determine our revenue, with most of it based on per student, so we get money per student, and then with a few other levies that are based on building age and then actual dollars that we spend. Our schools' property tax system obviously is very complicated. We have 39 pages of levy calculations and approximately 40 different levies. We have two property tax bases, a referendum market value and our net tax capacity. We have four different funds that are part of the levy, or there are four different funds, we don't have four, but general fund, community service, and debt service. There is also an OPED fund, which is other post-employment benefits, and Shasaw Lakes does not have that. And there are two different taxation categories, we have voter-approved and other. So keep in mind, a change in levy, if we see an increase or decrease, doesn't always mean a change in budget for us. Just because a levy increases doesn't mean we're receiving more revenue because our state aid could be going down, and I'll discuss that a little bit later as well. This is a visual of the property tax levy timeline. There's a difference between cities, counties, townships, and then school districts. So our legislative session ran from January through June, or usually does, and then our tax levy decisions begin in August, and they go through December, and then levies for everyone are connected or collected, excuse me, in 2025. The difference for a school district is we don't recognize that revenue until FY '26. So the money's collected in '25, but we don't see that until our next year's budget. So again, the difference between levies and budgets, our preliminary levy is set in September, the Board did that in September, the final levy is set tonight in December, and the school districts, but our school district's budget is approved in June. So what I'm presenting tonight is the 2024 Pay 2025 levy for revenue for next year, for '26. So one of the requirements tonight for truth and taxation is to discuss the current year budget. The Shasaw Lakes School District has five different funds, but only three of them have tax revenue. The general fund, community service, and debt service are the ones that have tax revenue. And so the levies we're discussing tonight are again for FY '26, and that budget will not be presented until next June. So what I'm going to talk about now is the current year budget. So this is our preliminary budget that was approved by the school board in June of 2024. We, they approved about $58.9 million of revenue and $59.6 million of expenditures, and those are for all funds. This chart shows that the majority of our revenue is generated in the general fund at almost 82%. That's the reason, that's the fund we talk about the most. And then on the flip side, we have 82% of our expenditures are also in the general fund, so the majority of our revenue in the school district run in and out, revenue and expenditure run in and out of the general fund. So shifting to property tax levy, we will talk about the process, the comparisons from 2024 to 2025, the reasons for those changes in levies, and then impact on our taxpayers. So you can see by this, the state sets funding formulas which determine revenue, the state sets tax policy for us, the state sets maximums, and the state sets authorized a school board system to submit referendums for operating and capital needs for voter approval. So as you can tell, again, school districts are highly regulated with the state setting formulas and policies for us. This shows our levy process, and we are finishing up with number six, that's why it's highlighted in yellow tonight, with this truth and taxation hearing, and the school board adopting our final levy. And then it goes back to the county auditor for them to determine the school taxes on each property. This is just another look at our six-month levy process. You can see we start in July, end in December. That's offset December 19th right now with our truth and taxation meeting and that certified the levy amount. So it's kind of like we do audit together, we do levy together, and then we start over again, and we start with budget. Kind of my process. So these numbers are all calculated for the current year, and then they're adjusted to actual for prior years. Make it just a little bit bigger, Michelle. There you go. So these are every levy that we have in Shasaw Lakes. And you can see there's a 1.6% increase in our total levy, 0.5% in, 0.56% increase in the general fund, a decrease in our community service fund, and then an increase of 3.63% in our debt service fund. So I want to explain some of the larger increases and decreases on this. The first one I want to talk about is that local optional revenue. It's an increase of about $49,000. The use of that funds are for general operating expenses. And the reason for the increase is funding for this program is provided through local levies, and we have to adjust it to actual. So when we set our levy, we set it this year, we're setting it on estimates. So when our actual enrollment comes in, the next year it's adjusted to actual. So that's what a lot of that is. The next one, operating capital, we've got a 65, about a $65,000 increase there, and that is only, we can only use those funds for capital-related expenses. Reasons for that increase is this program has provided a combination of state aid and local levy. So with our levy going up, but our state aid is going down, our state aid is going down about $85,000, so we're actually having a net decrease of about $20,000 in capital. And the reason it's changing is due to property valuation changes. Another one, reemployment, you can see a big negative there, about $41,000. Those are for unemployment costs, and the reason for that decrease is based on actual expenses, and we budgeted for, in '22, '23, for a lot more, and those actual costs did not come through. I do want to mention this does not include summer break unemployment. This is just regular unemployment. Another decrease we had was in school age care, about $58,000. This money is to help pay for high-risk students in that program, and the decrease there was just adjusting to actual. And last one I want to talk about is the reduction in excess fund balance. You can see we have an increase there of $169,000. What that is, is to cover delinquencies and tax collections. As school districts, we have to levy 105% in order to cover future delinquent taxes. What is showing here is we've actually collected enough, so last year we had an increase of, or we had a decrease of $278,000. This year decreased $109,000. So the difference there is an increase, we're still having a decrease, and that money goes back to our taxpayers. Thank you. So again, changes in these categories, they're due to enrollment, they're due to building age, they're due to actual prior levy and actual costs, due to legislation, and then a change in our debt service scheduled payments. So what this chart shows us here is the amounts of our levy for the past five years. You can see in 2021, our levy was $10.8 million, and now in '24, '25, we're at $11.5 million. So this shows a pretty steady amount of levy that we have here in Minnesota. This one shows the percent change year-over-year for the past six years, and really over the past four, we stay right in that 1% to 2% change, at 1.78, or 0.41, 2.11, and then 1.6 for '24, '25. So how can this affect a taxpayer's property taxes? And there are many factors that can cause that change in property taxes from year-over-year, a change in the value of an individual property, a change in the total value of property in the entire district, and then increases and decreases in the levy amounts that I just discussed. So what are the impacts to our taxpayers? Each property owner pays a portion of the pie, mental pie there. Our property values do not change uniformly across all properties, and the burden of the levy shifts from taxpayers with lower increases to those with higher increases. So if you have a higher market value increase, you're going to pay a bigger slice of the pie. One example here, if you have two properties in the district, both ballot houses valued at $100,000, that's just for simplicity's sake, the gold house is $100,000, the greenhouse is, and the levy is $500, again for simplicity's sake, each property would pay $250 in levy. If we change that up, and the gold house's value increased by 10%, but the greenhouse's value increased by 25%, still the levy is $500 because the school district only generates one amount. That doesn't increase, it just gets spread differently. So the gold house would pay less, and the greenhouse would pay more. So as I say, I'm recovering tax preparer myself, I always like to share that there are, there is a Minnesota property tax refund available, but please consult with your tax professional, and for more information to see if you're eligible. So what's the next steps? The Board accepts the public comment on this proposed levy, and then the Board will certify the 2024, '25 property tax levy. So at that point, I would open up to any comments from the public or the Board.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Well, I do.
Sure.
First of all, this is Christmas time, and we're doing this at this time. I mean, do you see how small of a group that we have here? I mean, my taxes, this is the second levy on here, now it's $2,000 in levies on my property taxes? Are you kidding me? This, I mean, and it is holiday time, and this is the last thing that I'm thinking about. I'm trying to think about my family, and now I have to come and be concerned about how much you're going to be raising my taxes. It doesn't sound like it's going to a voter registration for us to vote on, it's just you people are going to be able to vote and say, here, you got, I already have a levy on here of $1,000, now I'm getting another thousand? I mean, this is just out of control. And I don't know what to say about everything that you just put up there, but it's just very frustrating as a taxpayer here.
Okay, so I can speak to the date, we actually stayed off, we have to have, we have to have this meeting at this time period.
Right.
It's legislating, so we don't really have choice on that. I agree, it's a tough time to be thinking about all this, so I agree with you with that. And then if you wanted one of us in the district to look at your specific tax statement to see why the change, is it the school tax specifically you're talking about, or the taxes overall?
Well, it doesn't state clearly on here, it just gives me two totals.
Yeah.
That's what it gives me.
Yeah.
And honestly, there's no information with it.
Okay.
So it is very confusing, that's why I'm here.
Good.
And, you know, $1,000 plus another thousand that I already have on here. I don't know when these levies ever expire, it seems like they just keep going up.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's what everybody else's ideas are here, but it seems like there's just never, like, we used to vote on these during election time for levies, and it's not happening anymore, I'm not sure.
Yeah. Robert, can you?
Yeah, there are, I mean, we do have voter-approved levies, and those are the ones that are voted on.
Okay.
The rest of them are all mandated by state statute. The Board doesn't really even have a whole lot of control over it. Those amounts are set by, you know, based on our student population, based on our building ages, and then build up based on actual expenditures that we have. So if we weren't able to levy some of this money, we wouldn't be able to have these programs, you know, like community education, or, you know, you know, school age care, operating capital, that's where we get a lot of our, that's the only place we get capital money to take care of our buildings.
So I, and you're, you know, what you were, and, you know, it was a very good description of what's going on, but I heard a few times that things have gone down, and that's not reflected in my levy. This is, this is $1,000 this year on top of another thousand that I already have on there. I'm sorry to keep repeating it, but $2,000 a year is a lot.
You know, it could be, did the value of your property go up? Does that make a difference?
It went up, no, actually it went down. Yeah, it went down this year. But I expect the same thing to be happening next year. And, and so I, it just is, I can't even imagine, because this isn't even the state getting in on this, this is just the, this property tax stuff, so this isn't telling me this is the end of it. It's, when you say you're making some cuts up there, you know, is it getting reflected in the amount that everybody's going to get a deduction in their levy? Do we ever get a deduction here? It seems like it's always just going out, I need to just point.
No, it's okay.
But it just seems like it's just constantly going up, and, and there's just no end to it. This is, this is just, it's just very sad to me. And I just feel like I need to say something. So you're all here, you're all hearing me, and I'm sure a lot of these other people are feeling the same thing. $2,000 in one year is a lot of money.
Is that your final tax went up?
Well, it's $1,000 for this, is the way I look at this anyway.
So you looked at last year's, and then you looked at this year's, and your school tax went up $1,000?
Yeah, the voter-approved levy is 9.25, and the other levy is 9.97.
What was it the year before? Because those are existing levies and existing bonds, and they should not have gone up $1,000.
Well, it says your voter-approved levy, 9.25, so wasn't that an other local?
But did you look at it the previous year? My guess is it was about the same, and it did not go up, except, the only explanation, Robin, if you go, if we go back to that $500 slide, the only way that your tax goes up is if, because the levy doesn't get increased, we don't collect more money, but what happens is the value of your home went up or down. If it went up and others went down, yours went down, mine also went down, and the reason my tax went up about $160 for school tax, and my place is evaluated at $1.3 million because we have some land and a house I built that is appreciated. However, your tax should not have gone up $1,000. If you look at your previous levy tax and your previous bond, look at that, and then look at the new one, which you just got, we all got it.
Right, right.
I don't believe that it went up $1,000, and we did not vote for a raise, nor should it have gone up that much, even through natural adjustments through the property taxes, you see this $500, we don't collect more.
I mean, there's, we had a slight increase this year, but total, $181,000 total across the entire district.
Over every taxpayer's amount of money.
What was the 5% though? One of the slides you showed was this year, or maybe that's 2026 because you're, they're set there at that one, I can't read what that one says.
1.6.
And what is the 5, the first one?
That is from '19, Pay '20. That was back in 2020.
There's a reflection on the.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I can't really see it there.
Yeah.
I just, I'm sorry, I just jumped over. And walking to come in, Robin and I can sit down with you, because I don't disagree. The tax is really confusing. I think what we're going to probably share with you is that it'd be great to unpack that a little bit and see last year's and this year's, because our imprint on this is very low.
Yep.
The 1.6% increase, like Jeff explained as well, spread across the board, it's pretty minimal on our taxpayers, but I'm assuming that again, with other ones that can go ahead and have the same process we do when it's county, your local city or township, those are increased as well, and that can factor into some of those pieces, but yeah, I'd love to sit down or have you come in, we could, we'll walk you through it, and, because I'll be honest, a $1,000 increase, I'd be upset too, but I think if you look at last year's, I guess it wasn't $1,000 bucks, but when you see that stuff, again, I totally understand.
Yeah, and maybe I didn't even notice it last year, so.
Yeah.
The other thing is that all of a sudden I'm seeing it, because that's why I'm thinking this meeting was called was because of.
Can I see your statement?
As a school pitcher too.
This is last year's, where it was 9.25, it's actually going down to 9.23. Here it's 9.97, actually going down to 9.75.
So I do have $2,000 levy on my taxes already.
Yep, you have, yep, and it actually went down.
So it was existing.
So that makes me mad too, just saying.
It was existing.
That was existing. I, yeah, I know what you mean. But it is going down a little bit.
Okay, I'm.
Yeah, so it didn't increase $1,000, actually it went down a little bit.
Yeah, it's not much, but any, I'm just saying that this is just, there's no end to this, that's what I'm saying. It's next year, it's going to be more again, and as a taxpayer in this area, I just, it's just very frustrating.
Yep.
But I would, I will take you up on that to sit down and, and talk about it, because I would like to understand this more, because this, getting this doesn't help at all. I mean, it doesn't, you just, I don't know what it means.
Any comments?
Yeah, so, well, I essentially agree that we have systems built, you know, that seem to, it's always, well, it's only this much of an increase, it's always an increase, and we're trying to build big-picture items that are supposed to be cost savings in the future, looking ahead and evening things out, but it's always, well, just, and we have very little, unfortunately, I would argue, say, but my real question is, you're showing us this, how this works. I already got my 20, we all got our 25s, how can we be discussing something that's payable in '25 when I've already received it? Is this already done, or?
No.
You said, we're talking about it, it's payable in '25, is my property tax statement going to be different than the one I just received in the mail?
Probably not, that was your proposed.
Okay.
You won't get your actual property tax statement until probably March or April, because that's when, then they're due.
Got you.
That's when you'll get that statement. I'm saying that's when it's collected, so the county will collect everybody's.
When it's May and then October.
Yes, yeah, and I'm just saying that when I said that, school, school districts don't receive that money until our next school year, because we're on a fiscal year rather than a calendar year.
Which, I have another one, I'm sorry, what was another one of my questions? What's the fiscal year?
June 30th.
Okay.
July 1 through June 30th, kind of like a school year, when school starts.
All right. That helps.
Yep, you're welcome.
I looked at my taxes the last 10 years, because I had many of the same questions you did, and I'm on the school board, I want to be able to explain it. So I went back 10 years to my, in my files, and I pulled them all out, and I did county, township, I'm not in the city, but I would suggest that you also look at the city, because those have raised about 10%. The only way that a school tax increases is the adjustments with values, either a school, either a voter-approved levy or a bond, or we, our own things that we can levy, like career and tech ed, and there's certain, there's a whole bunch of things that we can levy that are given to us as far as what we can do based as what the school board can do by legislation. But you, in order for tax to go up for school, you have to voter approve it, for township, for city, or county, and I would look at the percentage of those, you would probably be quite surprised to see it, especially if you live in the city, I don't know if you live in the city or not. Just go back and do a little five-year window of how your taxes have changed, and you'll see that the school taxes changed very little in comparison, especially to the other entities that are just acts, where you don't get a say. In schools, you're, we're the only entity where you do get a say. I understand that, I appreciate that.
Anyone else have any other comments?
Can you go over the levy, when it says levy and other, like tax statement? I think the answer, I just can't remember. What is the other?
The other are, the voter-approved ones, we have one in debt, oh, one in debt service is a voter-approved, and then our voter-approved referendum, that's the $225 that we have our voter-approved referendum, the rest of them are income.
Okay, then, okay.
And those are ones that basically, you can say the Board has authority over, you know, the operating capital, the reemployment, safe schools, career and tech, and most of these are based on. And most of these are based on, on student population. So if our student population went up, our levy would go up as well. But our student population right now is stable to going down a little bit, so that's where some.
Yeah, I'd say my tax has gone up in ten years sixty percent, so.
Your total taxes?
Yeah.
Well, then I would also say, you know, just go back and look at the, where it came from. And I can guarantee you that I don't think you're going to see it in the school tax. You will see it in the county, township, and city tax.
Yeah, it's both.
The final tax.
Yep, I'm saying it's both, yeah.
Yeah. Well, and I'm, and I'm just, you know, if you want to be defensive or, but I also think we want the truth to come out, a aspect of what we're talking about. And I, you know, if you're looking at the bottom line and say, well, it's all school tax, I don't think that would be an accurate statement. That's why I say split it up, kind of look at a five-year window of what the county, township, city is. And then look at the school tax because we split it into two voter approved and what we can levy, which is a natural thing that we really haven't changed drastically over the last ten years.
You're exactly right, it's both. But I will tell you this, talking to the county and now the school board, you want to know what they both say? It's the school board. Talk to them.
Well, I would love that.
And then, because here they go, it's the county, talk to them. And I went to the county meeting the other night, a couple of weeks ago. And I said, uh, can you let me know like what's on these levies and how, how many levies we have? Their answer was, it's the school board, talk to them. You know, so it's, it's like a blame game in a way. I don't get it, you know, it's like, why not just say it?
Well, we put our levies out there.
Well, the proof is really in the pudding. You have your tax statement. All I'm saying is write down five years, well, write your number. Then the next year, then the next year, then the next year. Go through five years and you'll see exactly without us putting a slant on it or the county putting a slant on it, look for yourself, write off of your numbers, write off of your tax.
Yeah, I don't get that. Overall, a lot of people are setting me up a point that whatever we can do to cut that in the future from both sides, county and the, the school, the school district, I guess that's the people I ask them. Yeah, it's not, you know, we're not playing the blame.
Yeah, and the only thing the school board could do to bring it down, maybe they, they'd have to under levy. And then so we have to, you know, cut some programs then, and most of its buildings.
Correct.
And so I just want to show this one. I did take the eighteen pay nineteen off. Here was actually a decrease, but I just thought, I didn't want to show more than six years. So there was one year that actually the school district levy went down.
The other, the other thing.
Oh, I didn't know that too, yeah, right.
The other thing, Erin, I would say is look at the unassigned fund balances of all those entities that I've mentioned and see where the district is and see where the county is. And those are like a savings account or a banking account. Look and see where those numbers are in your state, in your county, township, city, and the school. And I think that will be how it will show.
I would also say that cities and counties do a treaty taxation meeting just like this one that I recorded that you can go look at to get, I agree, it's so complicated and trying to triangulate with all of them to get a full picture is really.
I mean, we talked about, I said thirty-nine pages. These are the thirty-nine pages that we start with in July and go through to figure out what our tax levies are.
Is there ever an end to a levy or a, I mean, I think I remember.
The voter approved ones, yes.
From years ago.
Voter approved ones, yes.
But if you're, I mean, if you're, I mean, this one's like three, three dollars, that went down. I mean, they went down, okay, I'll give you that. But I, I'm just saying that that's not enough for me to say, gee, I get to buy something because of that. But I, we've been up here almost twenty-seven years and, um, and I remember levies on our taxes were like two or three hundred dollars. That's what I remember now. I, maybe last year it was this and I just didn't notice it, obviously it was because it's on here saying this. But, um, I just don't, how, how did it get to two thousand dollars? That's just, is amazing to me. And it doesn't, it, there's no, I mean, I know you have thirty-nine pages there I can look through, but.
It might be the whole entire district, it's not going to be zero.
No, I get that.
It's going to be on your valuation of your property. And I know, and I know it went down. And but the last couple of years in Shasaw County are, the valuations have gone down.
Yeah, ours will next year. It's, but for some reason it went down a very little bit, but.
Yeah, and then overall some of the county went down a little bit this year, so I was told.
I have two left. For the new referendum we got coming up, probably, you know how that's going to affect us, taxpayers? All parts of what we're going to get that information out of.
Yeah, absolutely. Again, if the board hasn't taken action, because I know we talked offline about that. If the board takes action, we have all that information, we'll be sharing that all with people. And that'll be very much out there as well as me. And I invite you to come in and we'll be on the committee, we'll be sending information out. So when they make that final decision, we'll know the numbers, we can share that with people overall. Absolutely.
And the last one was, um, just to be truthful and all, the, remember guys, this was school board approved levy and voter approved levy. So voters didn't get to vote on the last levy. I understand you guys have Minnesota able to pass that, just.
And I did ask that question because it was that way. I asked our financial advisor, it does still show up on your tax statements as voter approved? And they said, actually, I was the first person to ask that question, but I thought, I, because it wasn't. It was voter approved this time because they gave the board authority to do that. It, it won't be that way this time. That's what I've been told.
That's what I, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Any other questions, please, for the board to move on? Thanks for having me, we appreciate it.
You're welcome. Check that out on my list.
That's huge. It's a lot of information happening together. And we're going to move immediately to our audit and the representative that is going to speak to us tonight. He's going to join us, um, online, so.
I couldn't quite hear you. I'm, I'm here. Am I ready? Are you ready for me?
Ready. Yeah, are you ready to go?
I am, I am getting there, yes. Give me one second here. Everybody can hear me all right? Hope, okay. All right, well, I will get started. Um, I appreciate you having me at your meeting this evening. I'm sorry I can't be there in person. It's been a wild day here at my house. So I'll just, again, start by just saying a quick thank you to the, the school board for having us as your auditor. We do appreciate that. And I also like to just say thank you to Robin and her team for everything they do as part of the audit. We couldn't have done it without them as well. So with that, I'll kind of get into my presentation here. Um, just a brief introduction about what I'll be going over in the presentation. Again, we will be sharing the audit results and why we're hired. We'll go over the audit opinion and any related findings for the, for the fiscal year. We'll go over the general fund results as well as some of the other governmental fund results. And we will close with some key performance indicators, um, you know, to others in the state of Minnesota, other school districts in the state of Minnesota and others in the economic development region near Shasaw Lakes. Our audit results for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. We did issue an unmodified clean opinion, which is the opinion that the school is looking for. So to arrive at our opinion, we tested a number of different things around paying bills, paying employees, you know, looking at tax, grant transactions, state and federal. We also look at what the board gets to make decisions, et cetera. So we didn't issue any internal control related findings for the fiscal years. Overall, a good year, uh, as far as internal control related findings for the school and the opinion that they're looking for. The second thing we are required to do as part of our audit is test state statutes and admit some legal compliance with those statutes. Uh, so the office of the state auditor does put specific guides on their website, uh, that we are required to test for school districts. Um, a couple of examples of those items would be timely payment of bills as well as any lack of conflicts of interest um, within the school board or anybody at the school. So we do have two different findings that we'll go over on the next slide. The last thing we are required to do as part of our audit is, uh, we were required to do a single audit as part of things this year. Uh, the school does have, there's a current threshold of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more of federal expenditures. Uh, that triggers a single audit or a requirement to have a single audit to be submitted to the federal government. So, um, as part of our process to do that single audit, we tested the food service program um, and have no issues and no findings. And we did issue an unmodified clean opinion on that single audit, so overall positive results for that. So our audit findings for twenty-three, twenty-four. So our first one is titled student activity accounts lacking instruction for disposal balance upon termination. Um, I think the title kind of speaks for itself, but again, every student activity account, um, you know, has kind of a student activity purpose form. Uh, you know, the finding really is just based on the MAFRA or the Manual for Activity Fund Accounting, um, states that the purpose, um, or the instructions for disposal, if there's any minor remaining balance in those student activity funds, um, needs to be listed on that form. So again, something to, to keep in mind going into our fiscal year. The second thing that we did have as a finding is titled collateral coverage. Again, this is a specific thing we test as part of our audit. Uh, and in this case, the school has, um, a bank account with, uh, I can't remember what the bank is. But, um, and again, it had a, a balance just slightly over the FDIC coverage of two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, again, it was closer to two hundred and sixty thousand. So essentially the school district was under collateralized by about ten thousand dollars. And again, that would, um, really only be an issue if that bank were to fail. Uh, so again, that ten thousand over the FDIC may or may not be able to be recovered. So again, somewhat of a minor finding, again, more of a legal compliance thing. And by the book, um, you know, the school was just under collateralized in that account. All right, real quick, before I get into some of the general fund and other fund results, we do, uh, present the average daily membership. Again, a little discussion in the, in the, the presentation previous to me. But, um, this is, uh, the, the past five-year trend, the average daily membership. Again, I think I would, uh, with how Robin described it, I think the numbers are fairly stable, dropping just a little bit over the past five years. Um, again, they've been kind of in that thirty-three hundred range for the past four years. But this is such a significant portion of how schools get funded. Uh, so we do present this as information, looking for trends one way or the other. So getting into the general fund results, we'll move next into the general fund, fund balances. They're looking at, um, you know, what the, uh, the reserve level is compared to the, the school's fund balance policy. So we do have four different lines on this chart. The top line there is going to be the general fund expenditures for the last five years. Um, again, from about forty to forty-five, forty-six million over the past five years. We also show the total general fund balance and note that, um, again, as a percentage of those expenditures, we also show the unassigned, again, uh, the total would include, it includes some, um, assignments or some, assignments for some future capital or other related needs, um, as well as some restriction. School does have restricted related fund balances from revenue received from the state and the federal government. That does need to be restricted as required. And again, we do also show the school's unassigned balance policy, which does state, uh, the goal of having seven to ten percent, um, of those expenditures in the unassigned fund balance, um, in the future. So again, a lot of information to kind of set that one, um, set that one up. But again, I think that, uh, what we can see, again, we look at the data on the screen. I think that unassigned fund balance percentage has, um, you know, kind of just creeped up just a little bit over the past five years. Um, again, it's still a little bit below the school's fund balance policy. So I think that is something to keep in mind. Uh, we can also see the total, uh, general fund balance as a percent there as well. So the next slide looks just at FY twenty-three, twenty-four. And I'm looking at the budget to actual. So again, on this slide, we're just going to see the final budget on the left, actual amounts in the middle, um, and the variance again on the right-hand side. So the school did approve, um, their budget for twenty-three, twenty-four to have a decrease in fund balance close to six hundred thousand dollars. And when everything was said and done, actual amounts did come in a little bit more favorable, where the fund balance did increase about one point three million. So, uh, some of the biggest reasons for that, again, revenues, um, you know, even though they were under budget, um, you know, that is a, that is something that was happening there. Again, this is a combination of maybe less students or general education revenue being less, plus some increases are above budget with special education revenue. Expenditures were also under budget, uh, by about two point three million. So overall, good, uh, good budget management there. Again, main reasons for some of those type of things would be some of the, some of the build-in maintenance and capital related costs that maybe were delayed or didn't happen, um, as originally budgeted. So again, overall, a pretty good year for the general fund, uh, with an increase or trend in the right direction. Our next slide looks at general fund revenues on a per A D M basis. Again, this is, um, we're, we're going to move into expenditures next, but this is the first slide. We look at some of the comparisons. Um, again, the statewide average does include all school districts in the state. Um, and the region is the seventy economic development region, which includes four or five of the counties, um, around Shasaw Lakes. So again, I think this just shows, um, you know, some of the numbers on a per student basis, what the, the state and the federal government, as well as some of the other, um, revenue sources are, um, on a per student basis. And again, this can be just relevant looking, um, into the future at, um, you know, as data points for looking at what those expenditures may be as well and looking for trends. So, um, I think overall, one thing I like to point out on this chart too is just looking at how big of a, a line that state sources is, um, compared to even the federal. And there has been a lot of federal sources, uh, with some of the COVID money that, um, finally dried up for many of the schools, uh, in the last year or two. But that state sources line, even with all that additional federal money, is such a big line. So just something to, to keep in mind. Next is the general fund expenditures on a per A D M basis. Again, just real quick, this is what we call a drip chart. Um, we look at expenditures in the seventy-fifth down to the twenty-fifth percentile. Again, this would be those statewide averages or all school districts. Um, the lines also go up to about ninety percent and down to ten percent. Uh, so the tenth percentile, uh, would be the lowest, um, for expenditures on a per student basis in the state of Minnesota. So again, this is just the numbers. These are, uh, you know, kind of an expenditure number on a per student basis, what the school is charging or is spending in its, uh, general fund. So again, we can also look at where the statewide averages are, um, and what other school districts are doing across the state of Minnesota. Again, I think the school district, um, is below, uh, those statewide average numbers.
So can I stop you there a second, please? Um, so this chart is telling me that Shasaw Lake spends roughly twenty-five hundred dollars less per A D M than the state average.
One way, I'm going to say yes caveat, that sixteen three fifty-five is a trend number. We don't actually have the actual number for twenty twenty-four. We'll get that information for next year. I think, again, more relevant or more actual numbers would be looking at the, you know, the previous two years for Shasaw Lakes compared to maybe where that twenty twenty-three statewide average number is. And kind of that, it's probably around fifteen thousand, fourteen thousand eight hundred, somewhere in that range. Uh, so again, it's probably closer to thousand fifteen hundred. Um, that sixteen three fifty-five, again, is a trend line. Yeah. Otherwise, yes. If that were actual, that would be the rapid answer, yeah. All right, so the next one, real quick, is a general fund operating expenditures, um, chart that we put together just based on the data that we have. This is more informational in nature too. Forty-five million dollars worth of activity each year in these. But what we do here is we just look at, you know, kind of the mix of the expenditures in the general fund, looking at what's being spent on salaries, um, and wages, as well as benefits, supplies and purchase services. So again, we can see here that the school has actually been extremely consistent over the past three years with those expenditures. Um, you know, kind of in that, um, you know, seventy, um, or excuse me, eighty percent range, um, a little bit under with a lot of the salaries and benefits numbers. Switch gears just a little bit and we'll go on to the food service fund. Again, we're going to see the same drip chart for this in this community service fund. Uh, again, these are just, uh, data point numbers for the school to show what it's standing per student basis for its food service program. Again, this is related to just expenditures and, um, for the school. So again, uh, things have gone up, costs have gone up in the food service fund and that's indicative of a little bit of this chart. Next would be the community service fund expenditures per A D M. Um, again, the same chart. I think we can see here, one, one thing I like to point out on this chart again is everybody's, every school district's community service fund now puts a little differently with the activity that goes into it. Um, the programs that the school has, whether it's after school or summer or, uh, in the morning or things of that nature. So, um, comparisons are a little bit harder, I suppose, if, if that makes sense with the community service fund. But this is, um, information that we do have and that we do like to provide for the school to look at where the statewide average numbers are. And it looks like these programs potentially are more widely used, um, when it comes to the school district, as the costs continue to go up. Next would be the debt service fund slide. So again, this one, again, a little bit more informational in nature. This does show that the, the, the remaining debt that the school does to pay off or has to pay off, um, the final maturity dates. Um, and again, just looking at a specific chart there on the bottom of what the future principal interest looks like for the next ten years, kind of in that five million dollar range. Um, again, this is more informational in nature. I talked a lot about fund balances and other things in my presentation. Just kind of to wrap things up, we do put a cash and investment fund, uh, balance by fund chart together, um, to look just kind of what's in the bank. Um, you know, the school had, did have a little bit of a dip in twenty twenty-three, uh, mainly in its general fund. Um, again, things kind of recovered a little bit in twenty twenty-four and you could look again just at the funds, um, where those dollars are kept. All right, so this is, uh, the, the next chart we go over here and starting the key performance indicators would be some of the property taxes. So I'll do my best to explain this one. Um, what we do show here, um, is looking at, uh, the property taxes on a per student basis, um, as well as the comparisons, um, in economic development region and the statewide average. We also show the average school district property tax per home, um, in kind of that middle column and the comparisons as such. We also show the district property tax, uh, per hundred thousand. We also show the district property tax, uh, per hundred thousand home value, which was somewhat, uh, mentioned in the previous presentation. So, um, again, I think, you know, on a per-student basis, I think those numbers can be helpful. Again, that's the, you know, the levy for the taxes, um, when it comes to per student. Um, again, I think the average tax, uh, per home is, is, is hard because again, that doesn't take into account how big or how valuable or, you know, how much your home costs or your value. But I think that that second or that third number there does probably the best to show again on a per hundred thousand dollar home value. Um, after credits, looking at the comparison for Shasago Lakes to others in the region, the statewide average compares very favorable. All right. So two more, the la, uh, second to last one here would be the general fund balance as a percent of expenditures. Again, went over this for the school's general fund a little earlier. Um, these are the total fund balances, not unassigned. Uh, but we do consistently get asked what other school districts have. So we put together that information to, to present it and share here. Uh, those are the numbers, those are the, the averages, um, for other schools in the region and the state, um, over the past four years when it's compared to Shasago Lakes. Last one I'll go over, again, we went over total general fund expenditures. We find it, um, also valuable to, to go maybe one step below and just look at elementary and secondary regular instruction expenditures per ADM. So this would kind of take out all building-related costs. It would take out, um, a lot of the other things and it really does kind of just focus on the classroom, um, what it costs to teach, uh, instruct students. So this is the four-year average, um, of the prior years and those expenditures. And again, that same drip chart, um, you know, where the school was a little bit under those averages in the past and kind of getting closer to, uh, to those percentiles as we look at twenty-three and twenty-four. That is the end of my presentation. Again, my name is Justin Nelson. I'm a partner with ABDO. Does anybody have any questions?
Can I pick up comments first?
Yes, yes.
I just want to go back to the two findings that we received that just want the board to know that we've taken care of them. Uh, we've taken care of, this is the form that needed to be signed. It was just one little area that needed to be signed again. So at first, you need to be, so we've taken care of that. And with the collateral, we are keeping that below the collateral and we will probably look at closing that account as well. It's an account that we don't use very much, so we'll just kind of go with that.
And that first form gave me a good explanation. So like, for example, if the baseball team had a fundraiser and there's a certain amount of money, but at the end of what they were going to spend it on, say they bought uniforms or something, there was a little bit of money left, seven hundred.
Well, it would be if that fund actually terminated. There was no more baseball.
Oh, there's no more baseball.
Activity account, what would they do with that money? And that was the area that was not filled in.
It just wasn't addressed. We don't have very many activity funds that close.
So I just, I just wanted you to know that we took care of it.
It was a language issue more than it actually had to come close, correct?
Wanted you to feel good. And the other thing I want the board to feel good about too is that the unassigned fund balance went up. We're super close to that, that, uh, goal that we have, the seven percent. So I'm, I'm pretty excited about that too. It's been a lot of hard work over the last couple of years and keep going in that direction. That's all I wanted to add to.
Any other questions? Justin, it doesn't think we have any other questions for you. So thank you so much for hopping on and, and explaining this to us and for all of your work for our school district. We appreciate it.
You got it. I appreciate you having me. Good luck the rest of the year. Thanks everyone.
Thanks. Have a good night.
You as well. Thank you.
Okay. So if there's no further questions, we'll need a motion in a second to approve the annual audit. Make a motion.
One second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Again, same sign. Uh, the motion passes to approve the audit. All right. We had no one who signed up for public comment, um, for tonight. So we'll move on to communications. Again, we're back to Robin Bosporian Ferguson with her un-audited report for us for tonight.
Now we're about to un-audite again. Catch out guard, sorry about that. Just trying to get, I figured you guys have heard enough from me already tonight, but, um, so yeah, the enrollment, uh, dipped a little bit again this past month, but we're keeping an eye on it. And we'll start working on a revised budget along with next year's budget as well. So I'll bring back probably a revised budget to the board sometime in February or March at that point to kind of look at where we're at and what we can revise. So you can see it's a typical trend on there, unfortunately, but that's what we're at there. Um, with the expenditures and revenue for the, um, month, all expenses and revenue actually are in line with prior year budgets, um, especially expenditures. They're really right online, in line there. Um, general fund is in line for revenue. Um, food services slightly lower compared to budget, but we did increase that budget. So we're trying to catch up to that. Community service is an increase, um, oh, in budget. And then obviously our debt services in line because that's all stated in the levy, so. Any questions on anything? Like I said, you've heard enough from me tonight. Any questions from the board?
Okay, thank you, Robin. All right, we're going to hold on to our student representative update and we are joined tonight by Gabe. This is old hat for Gabe. But we have our new representative, our junior, Annika. Am I pronouncing it correctly? Because I know some people are Annika, Annika Malcho, who will be joining us and learning from Gabe. And, and then Catherine also emailed me earlier today, um, and gave a little update that I can read, but I'll give you two an opportunity first. Gabe, would you like to go first? Is there anything you'd like to update us on?
Yeah, I've got a few things. Um, so on behalf of the student council, um, I don't remember the last time I was here. So, um, we've done a lot of good things with, um, giving back to our communities. Um, we've had a few fundraisers happen throughout the past couple of months. It's actually the most fundraisers I think our school's had consecutively for a while. So back in October, we did our, our student council did, um, trigger canning. So we went around to houses and instead of asking for candy, we asked for canned food drives, like canned food and non-perishable items as our drive for that month. Um, we ended up collecting four large totes full of, um, canned foods, non-perishable items and other things for the food shelf. Um, and those were given up at the beginning of November. And then, um, towards the end of November, November, closer to Thanksgiving, we did a Thanksgiving food drive. We, um, we, uh, teamed up with our NHS, National Honor Society and Michael Mattley's, um, insurance company, State Farm. And we, um, were raising, again, the canned foods, non-perishables, but most specifically like things that would be served at the Thanksgiving dinner. So like canned cranberries, stuffing, um, gravy packets and some potatoes, all that kind of thing. And we made it kind of like a competition. So like each pos would raise, whoever, whichever pos could complete the most meals. So like, you know, the potatoes, all that kind of a thing. Um, whoever completed the most, um, checklists with those items won a prize. And then the, um, pos who won, who collected the most stuffing boxes also won a prize. And both were won by Mrs. Carlson's pos, which you're not surprised to do whenever you're. And that brings us to our, uh, most recent, well, there's two more, but our, like one that just finished, um, our compassion drive. Um, that was put together by Link Crew and Galile, I believe. Um, and we ended up getting a lot of good things. That's like your hygiene, um, feminine products, anything for like babies. It's just a big rod of like making sure people are having enough things to keep themselves, um, hygienic. And so we, and toilet paper is our big thing. And so we had two competitions as well, um, who could complete the most lists, um, of their items, um, got put into a, like a raffle. We got drawn and then whichever pos could collect the most toilet paper rolls, also won by Miss Carlson's pos. Um, and she ended up collecting close to eleven hundred rolls of toilet paper just her pos alone. Um, put that into perspective, our pos was fourth place when we collected a hundred and fifty. So she, she kind of towers over, but you know, in the end it's worth it. It was the same place, we collected a lot. Um, and then our last, um, drive at our school right now is our toy drive for, toy drive for the, um, for children. I think we're, right now we're hosting a family. Um, and then any excess money or toys goes to a, a foundation that gives back to kids. So the family gets first picked, pick up these, the toys that we collect and whatever they don't, we'll just, um, deliver it to another, um, area where parents and families can come pick up toys for the kids there as well. So our school programs are giving out a lot. Um, and then as for our choir program, um, we just completed two concerts in December. It was a very musical, um, month. We had our Christmas in Shasago with our band, um, at the beginning of the month, very fun. And then we just had our, um, choir concert, winter choir concert last weekend. Uh, no, not last weekend, actually. Was that not Monday? That was Monday. All right. It's been a long week. Um, Monday went very well as well. I hope, uh, my, my advice for everybody listening, um, you know, we see, we just had this big talk on, you know, you're paying a lot of money to schools. So I encourage everybody to go see what they're paying for. We, our school does a lot of great things. We have great classes. We have great programs. Um, it does like, it, and it goes to good things. Yes, and, and it's a lot of the time, it's like, people don't realize that even if they're not supporting maybe somebody that's directly in their family, every one of us are very appreciative of what we can get, especially in such a smaller, like a smaller district. You know, a lot of times it's harder to get certain things. So what you're paying for goes towards many good things, um, and we like to give back as well. So we don't just perform for us, we perform to give back to everybody else, especially around the Christmas season. Everybody needs a little, little Halloween course to, uh, brighten up their month. Otherwise, I think the last thing I have to cover is more of a, um, gratitude statement towards also like what people are paying for. I work for community ed. People don't know that. I work for, um, Lakeside Kids Club. Um, and I actually had a couple of students, um, over the past couple of days say that they, um, I brought up the choir concert. I was kind of like, oh, bring it up, but they probably won't go. But I did have a couple of my kids go and watch it. And it's always, it's always a good feeling to know that the students are also involved, um, and that the staff are involved. And we have a great program. Um, I grew up in this program. I was, had parents who went to work at six AM in the cities and then picked me up at six PM. So it was like morning, kids club, school, afternoon care. So I think it's very important, if people are on the edge of sending their kids to this kind of a program, I think it's very, it's very much worth it. And we have a great staff role, not to, not to float my own role, but we, we're very involved with the, with the children's lives. And I think if you know anybody who has kids in the program at Lakeside, they'll know who I am. Um, and I'm sure they don't have anything bad to say about it.
We might have to check on that game.
But no, it's a great program. And I know that the children, the children that we watch leave an impact on our lives. And I hope, and I believe that we leave an impact on their lives as well, making it worth it for kids who don't really have the choice to go home like the other kids. So if you have anybody who's on the fence, I would encourage them to choose our program. Um, because I know I enjoy it a lot. I love seeing all the new kids come in and I know that they end up enjoying it. No matter how, how they say it, how much they dislike it, when they're there, they enjoy it. And then when the parents come, you know, you're going to signal. Yeah, it's a lot of fun.
Did he leave anything for you?
I mean, yeah. So I don't know if you guys heard about the musical.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I guess I'll just give you like a, we've been getting a lot of really good feedback about that musical this past April number. I won't log you down with all of these details, but we continue to get a lot of positive feedback, a lot of, oh, you're in musical. So us that were part of that program are always like, it's a lot of hard work that goes into it. So it always feels really good when you get positive feedback back that you, that what you did was worth it and it brought some good people. Um, I'm also in speech. So for those who don't, that don't know me, I'm in musical, speech and softball. So speech is just starting off. It's pretty slow going. There's not much to update there. We'll have our first meet and getting married. Otherwise, there's other student clubs and activities that are alive and well. There's a doubleheader basketball game tonight. I would have been there if I wasn't here. Hockey's going strong. I don't really watch it, but I've heard it's great. We have, we're pretty, arts, that's a pretty good. Yeah, I feel like they're, I feel like they keep hearing that they're winning, so that's good. Um, I know dances, our dance program is pretty strong and those girls put in a lot of work, a lot of ride stones. And they have another meet tonight, so that's great. Um, oh, one more thing. Uh, this week at school, like before holidays and before big breaks and stuff, we like to do these like theme weeks, if you will. So this week we've had, it wasn't, it was Popeye, I think, Go Wild, one of our student organizations. But we've just had dress of days around school. And I really think just this week, there's so many people that I've been feeling, I just like the atmosphere at school. It's been very festive, very welcoming. There hasn't been a day where I'm like, oh, I don't want to go to school because I just like, I don't know what it is. But this year it's just been like, there's been a lot of participation by students. There's been a lot of like good vibes for lack of a better term.
That's good. Um, good vibes are good.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yes.
I do have one more thing if I could add this. Try to plug this for the choir. Tomorrow's stage choir is out and about. Um, we'll be at Wild Mountain in the morning for the big Wild Mountain, um, skiing, like, it's kind of like the opener. So it's a, we'll be singing the national anthem and then we'll send them off with our best wishes. And then we'll be going around to, um, different nursing homes, singing to, um, some of the older people of our community. And then, um, I think, I guess I didn't really take a look at the list. But usually we hit up like the hotspots because they love to see us. And then if we ever have any like government centers or anything that we pass by, we're doing that tomorrow. Yes. I have learned. And so we'll be out and about. If you see a, uh, a post about it or you hear us singing, listen to us. Our stage choir is very good this year.
Don't you land at Brink's once in a while?
Every once in a while, we're at Brink's. You'll see us at Cubs sometimes. Um, you'll see us in videos at schools, you know, we're out and about. But that's kind of our big day tomorrow. Then we have our, um, pizza pub slash, um, Christmas party. So afterwards, so we like to tree ourselves as well. And all this I've borne in my own, just because of the, the climate of this meeting and very little money and taxes. And like, obviously not everyone gets to see where that goes inside schools. I don't necessarily know that I know where it all goes to do with the school district. But I would just, I guess, like to say out loud that we have so many different student organizations and clubs that have so many different students participating and they are all actively working so hard to give back. There's been a lot of, like, all these toy drives, all these like food drives, there's been so much of that just in the past two months. And the amount of things that our student population that are in these clubs have even brought into the sides. Like yesterday I walked inside school and the DECA committee was like playing Christmas music and Hada Santa and Mrs. Claus dress up so that people would bring in toys. Like, there's just been so much excitement around giving back. And just like, I kind of a, like more excitement for being educated and education. Maybe that's to do with the fact that we're not on our phones all day. I don't really know, but it's just been, people are taking their educations and their community really seriously. So it's.
Thank you for bringing that up. Um, I just wanted before to read what Catherine had to say. I mean, that is what I heard you say during this presentation. Here's how the student council is giving back. Here's how our choir is giving back. Here's what we collected for kids. Here's what we collected for people in our community who need toilet paper. You know, here's how we're going to go to the senior homes and sing. I mean, you guys are amazing. So proud of you. And I'm actually so proud of the school district for those very reasons. It's awesome. So thank you. Um, and I, I got to read Catherine's message because she took time to put in a lot of detail. So she said, from the end of the musical, which saw large amounts of profits and success to the progress student council saw with our recent butter parade fundraiser, um, that she was the committee chair for, and then multiple academic extracurricular organization, organizations are now starting their season. She's talking about, um, EPA, the Business Professionals of America. They oftentimes are facing setbacks for low membership and, you know, the cost and so on. So she said they're experiencing some success with another fundraiser. Um, there's a regional competition for EPA coming up January eighth. And Catherine has been named as the, on the regional board for EPA. She'll be representing our school at the regional conference and leading at the regional conference. Um, she also wants to stress the belief that, um, might be valuable as the board gets ready for a possible referendum. She says, seeing as the next referendum is crucial to providing needed updates and changes to improve the quality of education students receive. And students are the key people who will be creating benefits of these investments. She believes our campaign should include educating students and making the students aware of what the school could look like following these updates. She said, parents may only see the price tag, but students, um, relay the personal aspect of being tangibly, tangentially impacted by monetary investment and will likely be a very valuable part of convincing voters in the future. And that concludes her updates. And then she says, every, she wishes everyone a happy holiday season. So that's Catherine's perspective. So does anyone have any questions for our students or any thoughts?
I just have one comment. Um, you guys are like, I, I loved all your stories of giving back. And the thing that kind of stands out to me is it's multi-generational. You've, you've talked about the kids and the toys, all the way up to the senior citizens wanting to sing to them. So don't ever stop doing that because our community will need leaders like you guys who are willing to give back. And you don't need anything back in return. Good for you guys.
I would just say the other thing is if you weren't here, most of us wouldn't know that. So I really do believe you do it for right reasons. Josh and I have been. Josh and I have been talking back and forth, and I know Robin too, about a AI budget podcast that he made up. And at the end of the podcast was about the only thing I really agreed with. And at the end of it, it said, you know, we've been talking about school budgets and money and audits, right? But to me, and sorry, Robin, the best part of this night is you telling your story. Because that's why we do it. And the thing that the podcast said, it's more than a lot of numbers on a page, it's about people. It's about 3,287 students that we serve that don't just take, they give. And I think that's the cool thing about tonight. And you serve our community. And a hundred, I, there's, you know, I've been involved as a teacher 38 years, I was involved in compassion. We always won the toilet paper drive, by the way. Probably remember that, Joy? But the cool thing that, there's so much more that's not said. FFA produces hundreds and hundreds of fruit baskets that go to the food show. And I bet you every one of the groups too, it's not just a little bit of stuff that you put together. It's stuff that people really, we talk about food security, but really there's all those other securities of things that are daily used by people that don't have those access to those things that you provide for. And give them some hope, I think, around that Christmas time, which is just a great thing. So it's way more than numbers on a page, it's people and what you do. So thank you so much for coming tonight and sharing what you're doing for our community.
So appreciate you.
I would also like to say, I was listening to what you were talking about. Well, I, what struck me is, it's, it's pretty remarkable, and I just want to encourage you, the character that you guys are demonstrating is remarkable. You talked about gratitude, that takes a level of maturity that is really just impressive to work hard and do something and try to improve something, but in the end, to demonstrate a spirit of gratitude, that's remarkable. And it's something that I, as I said, again, I'm like, boy, that's a good lesson. Thank you for reminding me of that, because I feel a whole lot of gratitude for what you guys are doing. And what you're doing for our community, because that stuff really matters. So I just wanted to teach you about you guys.
Thanks, Josh.
Oh, I'll jump in on the one more thing. Just with Jeff's point and your point, the leadership for these programs to, to give back is one thing. You're also letting all the kids in the school participate in ways that we're like teaching them those skills. So it's just the ripple effects keep coming. We're all inspired.
No pressure. You know, I, I get the privilege to coach, which is the give back, and you guys are here too, but it's our entire school. Uh, I encourage anybody that wants to see what's going on in our school to go, because this is an example of what you'll see. And I think it's important that people understand what's happening, because I don't think people do. Good job, guys, keep voicing.
Perfect, thank you so much. All right, we're gonna move on to board committee updates. Did anyone attend any committees in the last month that they'd like to report on? If you guys mind it.
So that, I would make it quick, because I know we're going. But, um, middle school parent committee wanted to let you all know that they hosted a holiday shop for the students, um, last week, and it didn't raise a ton of money for them, but the teachers kind of gave them some good feedback that allowed these kids to purchase gifts for their families and, um, some for themselves, but just it brought this holiday cheer into the middle school that I think they're really due to have. And, um, they can name up parent volunteers because it was during the day before work day. So they, um, some students came and helped work it, and they're already asking if they can get a job there for next year too. So a huge success, and they've been doing a ton of other things to create holiday cheer at the middle school. And they're working with community ed to host a, a youth night in January, to provide a DJ and a fun place for kids to hang out. So, um, fun to have the new middle school parent group doing all the things. And then I also said on the gifted and talented committee, if anyone has questions about what they're up to, there's all kinds of work happening there.
I had a health and safety meeting, and, uh, Lori and I wrote a letter today to, in support of the Safe Roxters School Planning Assistant Grant. I don't know how much that is, but it's, uh, if we would get it, I think it's a good amount of money. And if you go to, I was just, as I was writing the letter today in support of it, I was just thinking, you know, going to the schools as we go. If you go to Taylor's Falls, or if you go to some of our schools, and we've actually lost a couple of children getting hit by vehicles going to or from school, now it's a historical thing, you know, it's not a recent thing. But if you go to Taylor's Falls, there's some places, there's just no sidewalks for you to go. And we think more and more kids are using bikes and things like that, so. Um, and we also talked just about, in our health and safety, about all of our 500 employees that are in the district. If you, you know, you see something that's kind of out of place, it's hard for one custodian in a whole school building to see all the things that might need to be repaired. So it's just more about awareness of talking to our staff, keep your eyes open and looking. If there's something that needs to be fixed or replaced, or you see it needs to happen, please share those things. So that was, uh, something that came out of health and safety. And then we had a C meeting and a 284 negotiations, if you wanna say anything about.
Sure, so SAC, C U now SAC, um, Schools Advocating for Fair Funding. Uh, we had guest speakers, Senator Mark Graham was there, and Representative Cheryl Yuakim? Yuakim, I think I'm saying that right. Um, just reporting on the state of government, and just where they think education fund local, not public. Um, and then, um, just gave, giving their pre-session thoughts about what they're gonna focus on in each party. Um, and then, um, let's see if there's anything I could speak to specifically. They did, you know, this is a group of superintendents and school board members from across the state. So the concern about, the concerns about the summer, um, the summer unemployment came up, you know, that just there's gonna need to be some revisions to that, um, along with, uh, some of the earned sick type challenges. Talking about pros and cons of continuing the food for all, so that free meals for kids, if that would be able to continue because of the price tag that's gonna be on that, um, considered in the budget and state. Um, so there, there's, you know, they have a lot of things to wrestle with, um, in the legislature this year. They did talk about, um, Shasago Lakes. Our day at the Capitol is February 11th, and they talked about the importance of students, which we'll be talking to you two, and parents and others going to talk to legislators about our funding. The fact that Shasago Lakes is 311 out of 328 in the entire state for, for people funding. We'd like them to change the way they fund schools, so we don't always have to go to our taxpayers, but they take care of it, so we're not always putting the burden on our taxpayers. So, um, that's an important date to get on our schedule. And is there anything that I missed that you two would say?
Lot of discussion about the REED Act and how we're way ahead of the game in the REED Act and we're not getting funded for it because we're not putting it into place, and other schools that are putting it into place are getting funds for it, and we're trying to get some questions, I think we had a good discussion on that afterwards. But we, we think we ought to get the funding for the REED Act because we were ahead of the game. Kind of penalized for being on the cutting edge, and so we'd like to see some funding for that.
I think what drove it to the top for me was that disconnect between things that get put into place and how it works in the district and how they don't always know unless we continuously tell our story. Um, so as long as you guys keep educating us, I think it's really important that we keep reaching out and being a little bit annoying, getting that story in front of them.
Good point. And then any other committees that anyone has to report on? The parent or the local 24 negotiations continue. Did you guys meet that last month?
Yes.
Okay, but that continues.
Meeting at your first weekend day or your end?
Correct.
Okay, if there are no more other board committee updates, we'll turn it over to superintendent deeds for a superintendent update.
I'm gonna continue on the theme of gratitude, I'm gonna start out with thanking Robin and her team. Since I'm here and I'm typically here at the truth of taxation beyond as well, and, um, I'm just really proud of Robin, the team, and all of us. Um, we worked really hard to put together a budget that makes sense, to make sure that we're working to get to a better place as a district, knowing that we have barriers like being ranked 311 after 328. And I think tonight's just a, a small microcosm of that work that we're doing. Uh, we're moving in the right direction. You know, we talked last year with all of you and our staff about 13-year budget history. I'm excited to go back and talk about that this year and fed with our staff, because we've made progress. We're doing the right work right now. I'm proud of our team, I'm proud of our business office for the work they're doing, they're good stewards. And we'll keep working as hard as we can to, again, maximize every dollar we have. I'll say it again, and I've been a part of another district similar to Shasago Lakes, that was an equity core financial district. We do more with less better than anybody else in the state, or not. And your stories speak towards that piece too. So again, thank you to your team for all the work you guys do. Strategic plan update, just want to let you know that we did have our process in November, and this is the first time we were able to convene and talk about a little bit. So just a quick reminder, we have five goals, and I'm just gonna give you quick verbiage on like a word that sort of symbolizes each goal. Goal one's about financials. It's gonna talk about what type of money we're getting, how we can leverage and try to work to get more and maximize the dollars we have. And also really centered around that bond campaign of talking about how do we basically make sure that we are addressing those needs in a way that's respectful for our community, but addresses those needs for the next 15, 20 years. That's what that committee's gonna talk about when they meet. Second one's academics, focused on basically the good things we're doing academically to move kids in the right direction. And I think we really focused a lot on the fact of, we have four or five center programs from elementary through to secondary that I can tell you that no one else stays to them. We're proud of that piece, we're gonna talk about, we continually invest in that to make better opportunities for our students and to really advance both the work we're doing here in Shasago Lakes. Third is communication, I think there's always a point of making sure that we're going through and talking about how our story's being told. There's a lot of different things we're moving on and doing more work on, but like anything else, it's great to get feedback. This group will sort of help us to identify how's the story coming out, and what else can we do to really get advanced that cause as we talk about to good things happen in our district. Fourth is volunteerism, I love this one because it talks about, and I heard that theme today, getting people in our buildings, getting people to see the good work that's happening, and how do you encourage people from the outside to do that? I'm a rotarian, been a rotarian for about 15 years, and our local group is talking about the power of mentorship. We would love to see more mentors with our kids to get support to work that they're doing. So whether it's volunteers in the building or mentorships for our students, we're really excited about where this can go and the work that we can do in that area. And then goal five is about engagement. How do we continually make sure that we're talking about the work we're doing collaboratively across the board, in our form walls and outside? We do a lot right now, one thing we're gonna share in goal five is we have about 12 different unique committees or groups that we basically convene to get feedback on a regular basis. But talking about that and making sure we're doing that meaningfully, intentionally, and taking the feedback and doing something with it that will be part of that journey and goal five. All the groups start convening in January, invitations either have already gone out, will go out the next day or so. Um, and we're just excited to start getting the work done. Made an investment of people's time for two days, four days, three hours each. Um, and at the end of that process, we came up with a really good plan that we are gonna execute and put into place in the next year or two. So we are excited about where we're going and keep, uh, keep up to date with us here because I'll break back reports every so often to board. And we'll be communicating this on our website and different ways across our communities that can see the work we're doing. Last thing, you want to pull up those pictures? I'm just gonna talk, I'm not gonna read this to you because again, you guys did a fantastic job talking about the work that you are all doing as well. So if you just wanna go scroll through some pictures, I'm just gonna talk gently speaking. Our kids are outstanding. We have great people doing great things for our community. I am so proud of the fact that we have young leaders who are showing and following the way that we want ourselves. And Josh, I like what you said too, it reminds you of what we can do as well, and not forgetting that pack of we have communities that are supportive of us and we need to support them as well. And there's some pictures that I'm gonna talk about the high school kids, which a lot of times lead the way, which I love. This is one that my focus too is that we had seventh graders have joined our rugby event for stand anonymous and helped basically collect toys, books, and food for people in our communities, support them for Christmas time. And then I have one picture I'm in with, is that's the holiday cheer piece. Um, I just love the fact too that again, our students are finding ways to interact. So whether it's a concert, band or choir, at either high school, middle school level, or this one you're seeing, this is at Taylor's Falls. And I went over there when they were practicing for tomorrow. And they all have little candles, and not real candles, we don't, we don't light those up in schools, I want to say around the front. But they have the candles, and they made this sort of you, in a simple sort of basically saying, we are surrounding it and really rubbing up all our students and our communities as well. And I just really appreciate that gesture of, again, it's about serving others. And if we are doing that work, I, I cannot speak volumes enough about what that means to have people like that in our district, in our communities. And if that's our future, boy, our future is gonna be bright. So I just wanted to basically end with this, I wanna thank our students for following the way, for how I do things, because we're developing them for life as well. It's not just academics, it's also about what we're gonna be as we go into life, and our kids are very outstanding. So thank you guys for what you do and for sharing that tonight, and wanna thank all of our students and our staff for supporting that work as well. And just like I said, such a quick time of year, but again, there's so many examples of how we basically rock this out in Shasago Lakes. Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. And that includes our claims and accounts, some personnel items, some extracurricular payments, some hiring notices, um, certified contracts. So you'll see the list there in front of you. If there aren't any questions, we'll take a motion in a second to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion here.
Yes. We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign, that motion passes. All right, we pulled out, um, Brenda Carlson's softball coaching contract, we thought that needed figures, debate in order to pass. Also, she is on schoolwork, so we pulled it out so that she's able to abstain from the vote. So we'll need a motion in a second to accept Brenda Carlson as a head softball coach.
I made a motion to accept Brenda Carlson as a head, yeah, softball coach.
I'll second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain from that.
Against, same sign, motion passes. Brenda, you're the softball coach. Okay, no old business, new business. We have created so many donations, and again, speaks to the generosity of this community and the way we can't do this work alone. So I'm gonna read this to you, and we'll take them as a resolution. Um, we have the campus EPC foundation that gave a thousand dollars to the Shasago Lakes Science Department. We have the Shasago Fire Department that gave scholarships to Wolf Ridge, the Bed Project, the Senior Party, the woodworking class, and the dance team, in amounts of $675,000, $1,000, $1,500. We have the Shasago Lakes PTO that they gave to Lakeside, and, uh, $3,799. We gave to Fletcher Family Foundation, gave the middle school $5,000. Forest Man gave the middle school $1,000. Um, LAR rate gave, um, $29,000 for the JV baseball field improvements. Lynn's from Fire Department gave the dance team $750, and the Shakira Volunteer Fire Association gave Wolf Ridge $500. So our genuine thanks to this community for supporting the work that's being done in schools. Um, we'll need a motion in a second, and we'll do a resolution for those donations. I'll make a motion. Do you mind starting with you, Sarah?
Tara.
Josh, aye.
Brenda, aye.
Jen, aye.
Jeff, aye.
And Lori, aye. That resolution passes. Okay, we've gotten to a point in the meeting where we're certifying the levy, um, that was explained to us by Robin for leader. Is there anything additional you wanna say at this point?
Nope, I really don't have anything else to say, except, um, there was no change from what was proposed in September, at a 1.6% increase.
Any other questions before we move this vote? Okay, so we'll need a motion in a second to approve certifying the levy.
I make a motion to certify the levy.
I'll start.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. Um, the motion passes to certify the levy. Next, we need to authorize next the solution, uh, to the author, to submit, oh, review and comment. We have to submit for review and comment. That doesn't mean we've made final decisions on the planning or, we just have, this is just part of the process that we have to submit this for review and comment so that we can keep moving forward. So we can still make alterations to what we're asking and what the projects are going to be. So we need a motion in a second to that end.
I make a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign, that motion passes. And the last thing we have is an MOU about a career implement. It was a unique situation, and if anyone has any questions, Robin will actually be taking questions for us too. I don't know if you want to provide any further background.
Yeah, it's just, uh, between the district and, uh, one teacher. Just to make up, it was an error that happened last year.
And it's, it's attached.
Yeah, it should be attached to there. It's the average, right? It's a more time thing.
For this one employee. Any questions about that? If not, we need a motion in a second.
I make a motion to accept the MOU for your implement.
I'll second it. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.